Can you hear me out there? Can you turn the ball around a little?
Oh, that's the other piece.
It's 5:31, I'll call the City Council into session. Would you sit down, Mr. Tenfor?
No.
Thank you. We have a quorum, Stacy.
Yes, sir.
All right. We have tonight, the Pledge of Allegiance is going to be led by Brady Pendleton.
All right.
Stand.
Go ahead and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, sir. As in almost all of our meetings, we'll have an invocation tonight by, tonight's by Paul McQuerry. Is that right? Paul McQuerry from the Valley Grove Baptist Church.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you humbly thanking you, Lord, you give us an opportunity to serve this community in whatever capacity that is that we serve, be it elected official or clergy or first responder or otherwise, we thank you, Lord, to give us an opportunity to serve. May pray, Father, I personally pray for this City Council that you will provide them wisdom and guidance in everything that happens today, and may everything we do give you honor and give you glory, because you're the one that deserves that. For it's in Christ's name we pray these things. Amen.
Let's get out. Well, thank you for the prayer tonight and for this ministerial alliance for providing services every Sunday, every time we meet. Thank you very much. We have a donation, excuse me, a donation presentation by Keep Steenfield Beautiful.
Good evening. My name is Jill Burke. I'm with Keep Steenfield Beautiful, and we have several of our Keep Steenfield Beautiful board members here tonight. In November, at the annual arts and crafts fair, we had a fundraiser that was called the All American Thanksgiving Raffle, and we appreciate the support that we got from the City Parks and Leisure Department. That was very helpful, but we're very grateful for the support that we received from our community and from Bell Dow. It was very, very helpful for us. So because of that, we had great success with our fundraiser, and we ended up with $7,000 that we would like to donate tonight to the all-inclusive playground. We also finally want to thank City Council for supporting the all-inclusive playground, for really making that important initiative happen in our community. So at this time, we'd like to present the check.
You want to introduce your board?
Why don't you just stand up and introduce yourself.
Stephanie Elliott, Mr. Elliott, Pam Littleton.
And?
Darren Trussell.
All right.
Stand wide, Mayor, so I won't get the picture.
No, I didn't say that. Oh, good, yeah.
Thank you, ladies. Thank you very much.
Mayor, I'm going to say, this group of ladies does a lot to keep Steenfield beautiful just by being here.
Thank you all so much for being here.
Too bad we don't have evaluations of council members. Thank you all, ladies. I want to, we're going to make an adjustment to our agenda. If you want to just notice that on item 14 and 15 are being pulled from the agenda. Next item is citizens' general discussion. I have one person, but I believe you want to speak specifically about an idea, so, or a particular item on the agenda, so I'll hold you for a minute. Anybody else want to, general discussion? Harry Dunn? And we'll go to the next item, which is, consider the initiation of abandonment of an eight-foot alleyway located at Block Eight, City Edition, and City of Steenfield. Who's going to present that?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The alleyway that we're talking about is the alleyway that runs between, I'm sorry, that runs parallel to College Street off of the alleyway behind Mr. Pendleton's office. We have eight feet by 94 feet that we are requesting to be abandoned. There is no use, no municipal use for the city. This would revert, Matt, it would allow this property to be purchased by two property owners on either side of it, or the property owners on either side of it, and would return it to the tax rolls. It would also give the people along McNeil Street a little bit more room in that alley. They only have about a foot. And we respectfully request that the council agree to initiate the abandonment of the alley through this resolution, and it will go to P and Z for their consideration and come back to you later.
Any questions for Alan?
Mr. Barnes, do we have any utilities in that alleyway?
We do not.
Okay. And Randy, when we abandon the alley, how's the ownership of the alley at that point?
Offered to adjoining property owners.
Oh, do they halfway it or do they own?
Halfway.
Alan, was this initiated by the staff or?
Staff.
Okay. Anybody else? Do I hear a motion?
Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-R-03 authorizing the staff to prepare procedures for abandoning the eight-foot alleyway located in Block Eight, City Edition, and City of Steenfield to present same to P and Z and City Council for action on said abandonment.
Have a motion, I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Darren. Further discussion? Proceed to vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same time opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, sir. Next item, consider award of the airport pump station expansion project to Red River Construction Company. Nick?
Thank you, Mayor.
Every time you get up, there's a lot of zeros.
Better than nines, I guess.
Lot of commas, yes.
Yes, sir, a lot of commas. So, this is a really exciting time. On Monday, November 22nd, we opened bids for the airport pump station expansion project. We had over 100 sets of plans that went out, but we only got two bids back. Now, two bids that we got back came from very reputable contractors. This project, if you recall, provides a 1 million gallon ground storage tank and a new pump station in preparation for the development of the 536 oil field. It also allows us to begin the process to decommission the paddock pump station. Now, Red River Construction Company has performed many similar projects. This would be kind of on the smaller end of the projects that they normally perform, but they were evaluated and vetted by our engineering design firm and came back with a positive recommendation. Our initial estimate for this work was right around $2.5 million. And like the trend that we've been seeing, our bids came in at 3.6 and about 4.1 million. It's the recommendation tonight to award that full base bid amount as well as one of the six alternate amounts for some external outlet piping on the existing tank. The total amount would be $3,797.6150. I'm happy to, we can talk about this, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Nick?
Mr. Williams, does the number of plans that you sent out and the fact that you only received two bids indicate that there is a, an extreme glut of work available for this type of contractor?
Well, we spoke with the contractors, and we spoke with many contractors, and you're right, even some of the local contractors here, I had a conversation before this very meeting, and it's the same story everywhere. I haven't talked to a single contractor that's looking for work, but I also haven't talked to a single contractor that's not looking for people. And so, this, this trend is continuing. That's why I do recommend that we lock in these prices today.
Nick, I assume in years past, obviously, we've kind of taken the touting approach of, when the work is plentiful, we'll wait on the project and rebid it. I assume that in this time period, we find ourselves since our clock used to be, where waiting to rebid could cost us a significant amount of money, could it not?
That's my opinion, that it could cost us a significant amount of money. Not only that, we do have some infrastructure issues, and so I do recommend that we proceed, just simply because we need the infrastructure.
Mayor, would you entertain a motion?
Entertaining motion.
I would make a motion that we approve the contract for the ground storage tank and the pump station, at the airport pump station with Red River Construction for a total of, well, I lost my total there.
$3,700?
$3.79 million for the base bid plus the one addition.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, further discussion?
Are there funding mechanisms in place for this?
Yes, thank you for asking. So while the airport pump station was not included in the budget, we did meet with committee and council meeting, and we've identified those American Rescue Plan Act funds in order to help pay for this project. Now, the city received that first tranche of 2.6 million in August of this year, and is supposed to receive that second reimbursement of that 2.6 million in August of 2022. That'd be approximately six months into this 18-month-long project.
Where did we receive the estimated cost? Was it from Fries and Nichols? Is that where we were thinking it was, the 2-point?
No, we, the engineer of records is Providence Engineering, and we've been working with them to.
How did the estimator miss it so bad?
That's, that's a great question. Now, the cost estimates that we worked with at the beginning of this were also in conjunction with the contractors, and in conversations with Red River after the project bid, their, their comments were, our subs came in, in his case, three times higher than what he expected. So while I think we missed it, I think we missed it for several reasons. Number one, the market is just so volatile. We've seen that on the Harbin project, we saw it on some vehicles that we bid earlier this week. Again, another reason that I'm, I'm in support of locking in the numbers now, I'll put it that way.
To what will be the, where is the difference going to come from?
Same money from the rescue plan, it's going to come from the second 2.6, is that right?
It, it's certainly at the council's pleasure to do that, but there is a funding mechanism that, that allows you to do that, no matter where you take it from, your rate structure improvements will pay for it.
Does this impair other potential projects we're hoping to cash on?
I don't think it necessarily impairs it. We hadn't decided what we were necessarily going to spend, the 2.6 million, the second tranche, that has not been officially designated yet. So will we not be able to do as, as many projects? Yes, but we have money in our rate structure that we implemented to, to do quite a few projects.
And this was the, of the capital projects we discussed?
This was the number one priority. Yes, sir.
This is the number one priority.
Yes, sir.
What else? Have a motion, a second, proceed to vote all in favor, say aye. Same time opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
We have several items. Of course, Steve Killian's going to drag us out a half tonight, as usual, but we're going to address, is it four through 12 at one time?
Yes, sir, I believe that's correct.
I think that's correct. What we're going to do is, I guess, four through 13, we're going to let Steve make one presentation of all the material, and then we'll go into public hearings on the project, and we'll vote on each of the items separately.
Yes, sir. Appreciate the time-saving mechanisms that we're trying tonight, so we'll walk through these.
So we'll get a hard time next time, right?
Yes, sir. Mayor, council, thank you for having me tonight. We are looking at some major subdivision waivers from a gentleman named Kevin Maynard. He has authorized, Mr. Vince Daddio, Mr. Maynard's here as well, but Mr. Vince Daddio had presented these cases to P and Z. So we have basically three parcels with five different waiver requests, the first one being 331 Chalk Top. They're requesting a sidewalk waiver. In your packet, I have maps illustrating the properties. You may remember that previous owner had come to City Council. On this particular set of properties, we had a rezone issue with a very small sliver on these four properties to get it rezoned from industrial to R1. You may recall that. Give you a little history there. When Mr. Trotter developed these properties, the, the civil plan set stated that the improvements would have to be made when the lots were developed, and that included the sidewalk curb and gutter, as well as the street widening respectively. Since then, Mr. Trotter has sold the properties, and they are now owned by Mr. Maynard. So on 331 Chalk Top, we are looking at a sidewalk waiver request. City council, or I'm sorry, Planning and Zoning met on November 17th, 2021. They had a vote of three to three, so therefore it moved forward without a recommendation to City Council. As we move through the packet, I have excerpt of the ordinance there for your review, and you see the subdivision waiver criteria, and also that the burden of proof falls on the owner of record for the waiver. A hardship is not defined as a cost measure, or if we think it is feasible or not, it's based on the topography of the property and challenges with developing the property. So just wanted to point that out. And then, as we work through the document, we do have the letter of authorization from Mr. Maynard. Have the documentation on the record drawings that I mentioned requiring those developments be, the improvements be made upon development. And then, as we continue through, we did have three letters of opposition for P and Z for these cases. I think we had one submitted right before this meeting started, so that would bring us up to four for each of these cases. And a lot of the, at least two of the letters of opposition said they didn't really care so much about the sidewalk, but they were concerned about the curb and gutter because of flooding concerns in the area. So we've had some additional documentation submitted today with pictures of the conditions of one of the properties in the area. And that gets us through to Mr. Daddio's pictures, which are for Chalk Top, showing the absence of the sidewalks in certain areas and neighboring properties, and also for That would cover my comments for SV 006. Moving to sidewalk variance or subdivision variance 2021 007, this request would be for sidewalk requirements for 250 South Dale. My comments on the remaining documents would be the same. That would bring me to the next case number. Sorry, I have to shift over to the other document at this point. SV 2021 008 is for curb and gutter at 250 South Dale. And P and Z was very consistent on their votes on each of these cases. They voted four to two to deny each of the requests. I felt I mentioned that earlier. The next case, sir. Next case is SV 2021 009. That's for 244 South Dale. That is for sidewalk waiver. Again, four to two on the denial by planning and zoning. And then I think that brings us to the last case for Mr. Maynard and Daddio, which I'm almost to. And Mayor, council, that would be SV 2021-010, which is for 244 South Dale for curb and gutter requirements. Again, a vote of four to two by planning and zoning to deny the request. With that, Mayor, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Steve? Here in none, then we're going to enter into a public hearing. I have one individual that's indicated, Laura Carey. And since there's technically one, two, three, four, five items, it's in three minutes, we'll just let you speak. I mean, we could have done one, three minutes for each of the items, so let's let her speak.
My name is Laura Carey, and I'm not used to talking in front of a bunch of people, so.
It's okay.
I live at 221 Chalk Top. We have the three houses that your guys are talking about, and I live in the middle one. We've been there about between six and seven years, and in that length of time, we've had, one May, we had 67 inches of rain, and if it hadn't been for the city to come out and bring the sandbags, our house would have flooded. They came out, Tony came out, he worked for the city, he came out and he put one layer down, and we had another rain that night, and it went over that, so he came and put a second layer down, and it went over that, and he put a third layer down. You know, that's quite, quite a bit right there, before it stopped the water from coming in. We had so much water, and he also put sandbags around my house so it wouldn't come in, because we had it up on the back porch, we had it this close to back, which was, it was going to come in. We've had periodic, through the years, since we've been there, heavy rains, that's done the same thing. I feel like something needs to be done with Dale Street. It's, it's capped like this, it's cracked because of the big trucks that come. It needs to be, I think, worked on, it needs to be lowered, it needs to have curbs and gutters, and that flooding issue needs to stop before it gets, it's not just me, I'm the center one, the one at the end is the same way. I think the curbs and gutters need to go all the way out to the highway. I sent in pictures of my back, and I also looked door. We also recently had, the, the city had the people to put in a fire hydrant, and in testing that fire hydrant, I don't know who did it, but in testing that fire hydrant, I looked out and I had water coming through the slats in my fence. I have three dogs in the backyard that I'm babysitting, my granddaughter, because she's building a house, and the water was clear up to where they bend their knees, where, you know, and I was, I couldn't get the guy's attention for the, and I couldn't get out the back because there was so much water. I went running out the front screaming, "Shut the water off, shut the water off, you're going to flood my house." And it was very, very scary. I, I don't know, I just, I, I really feel like curbs and gutters need to be done, but I don't know, I'm not an engineer. We did have an engineer come out from the city and look at it about when we were having all that heavy rain, and he said, "Oh, yes, ma'am, there's something wrong here, we need something done, and I will get back to you." And he said, "Oh, yes, ma'am, there's something wrong here. We need something done, and I will get back to you." And I'm still waiting. He hasn't gotten back to me. There was a gentleman came out from the city and talked to Jane and I, which was my next door neighbor. And he looked at me and he said, "Ma'am, I can't help that you bought a house and a hall." I didn't think that was very funny because he didn't live there, I did. My husband and I are both retired. My husband's eighty-three years old. We, I don't know, we thought when we bought this house, it was gonna be our last house. Our children live here, our grandchildren live here, and our great-grandchildren live here. And I just wish that they, you guys could see it within yourself to do something about Dale Street. Not just the curbs and gutters, but the whole street needs to be fixed.
Any questions?
The pictures, I think these were from you, Ms. Carey, of the water in your backyard. Those were from your.
Yes. There is also, my grandson-in-law yesterday, I found some pictures that Barbie had sent me of a movie, like a video of the front of the house and the water coming through the street and the water coming between the two houses onto the street. It looked like a lake. And then the, there's tree, there's pictures of two trees that Angela, you know Angela, would, during the time that the fire hydrant was being tested, a couple of days later, we had like ten inches of rain. And her tree that was beside her house fell on her house. And there's pictures of that, which is not in my yard, but it's, there's just a fence between us.
Any other questions?
One of my questions would be for Nick.
Okay.
Have we looked at this issue on this part of the street? Have we researched this?
Yes, sir, I'm aware of at least one time where the city's been up there. I do recall the story where the sandbags were set. We will be working on a solution to take care of that. So there is definitely an issue there. We have been there at least one time before where we implemented a valley gutter across the front of the property. It sounds like we need to put in an entirely new solution. So certainly we'll support curbs and gutters in this area.
Anybody else?
Will, will the curb and gutters on this section of Dale help with that particular issue in that particular area?
I believe it will, and certainly we're gonna work on the projects to alleviate that issue altogether.
And this may be what you're asking, but if we have them put these curb and gutters in on this development, this isn't gonna make their problem worse unless we, unless we do the hallway. Or it would make it worse for them if we don't go in and do the hallway. Because basically we're funneling more into their yard.
I think no matter what, the curb and gutters need to be put in. It sounds like there's an issue even before there's curb and gutter put in, notwithstanding the lots and stuff in plan.
But there will be a bigger issue if we put curb and gutters.
Certainly could be, yes, sir.
Angela told me tonight, which before I moved here, that the city came out and they raided Dale Street. And there is about a long more width of land that belongs to us, and the rest of it is the Dale Street. And so I think, it's just my opinion, but I think that because it's capped like this, that if you flatten the street and widen the street, maybe it wouldn't happen so bad.
Anybody else have any questions? Thank you, ma'am. Anything else you want to tell us?
No, I think that's.
Thank you very much for coming tonight. And don't be afraid, we're your friends. It's okay.
One question.
We're gonna go ahead.
And this is for, for our engineer.
Nick wants to go up there. Thanks, sir.
Nick, you said two things here. You said, one, that it might make it worse if we curb and gutter. And another one that said, first, you said that the curb and gutter would maybe alleviate some of the problems.
If I said that, I misspoke. I don't believe the curbs and gutter would make it worse. I believe it would assist in helping the issue.
You're talking about the whole length of the street.
Yes, the entirely.
What we're talking about is behind, where these lots are, the property question.
If you just did that, those two lots on Dale Street, does that make the problem worse? That's the only curb that gutter back there.
To me, it looks like it would funnel it.
It's quite possible that it could. I mean, without shooting the grades, I couldn't tell you for sure. What we do know is that there's a problem there today, and so that problem needs to be fixed all by itself. If that problem is not addressed and you put curbs and gutters in, it could quite possibly make it worse.
You need to put gutters on this particular problem.
Right. To put them on the lots that are there now, that are vacant, and not put them on the ones that are adjacent to it, could.
Other questions?
Without seeing the plan, I wouldn't know.
Any questions?
Yes, sir.
Do we have any idea of the linear foot from the end of this to Dale?
It's about three hundred and fifty feet.
And it's not as simple as putting this building for a curve. Because it's basically built like a county lane. I mean, it's just a kind of county road, lane type.
Are there bar ditches on there? At all?
It's not.
Okay, we're gonna enter into public hearing. We're gonna take one of the items. I don't think there'll be anybody speaking in other words. Well, I don't know, the developer might want to speak. We're gonna look at public hearing for case number SV twenty twenty-one zero zero six. Anybody wanna speak in favor or opposition to the request? Go ahead and state your name and your address and whether you're for or against. And then you've got three minutes.
Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you very much for allowing us to speak. Our request was not made for hardship reasons whatsoever. It's purely a stacks. On Choctaw Street, the, it has curb. The request for sidewalk, I understand. That property, it shows in the photos, is much higher than the curb. The house is being built right next to our lot in question. We can't even put that sidewalk in until that person completes their grading. This ground is much higher than, than the curb, as I mentioned. So when installing this, you would probably, in order to get on the sidewalk, you would have to walk uphill from the street to get on the sidewalk. Doubt very much anyone's gonna do that. It's gonna look out of place. There are no homes on Choctaw Street or in that entire subdivision that have walks. Going on to Dale Street, requirement of curb and sidewalks. Dale runs north and south. On the north side, next to our property, there's a fence. Our sidewalk will run right into that fence, right up to it. On the south side, the same thing happens. Then we are, as I understand it, being required to move the curb five foot in and put the sidewalk right against the front cropping line because there's not enough street there. That street right now, I believe, and I'll be corrected by Steve if I'm wrong, is approximately forty feet wide now. All subdivisions require fifty-foot right-of-way. It does not exist there. This street is heavily traveled by tractor trailers because of the industrial property at the end of the street. If we put a curb in there, not the sidewalk so much, but the curb, it could create, as we've heard here about the flooding, it could create an issue. I'm not an engineer. It would make better sense to not have to tear a curb out after we've installed it because the elevation of it is not going to work down the line if and when a curb ever goes down the entire street. So again, for aesthetic reasons, not monetary reasons, we're asking for a waiver because it's gonna be so much out of place with the way it's gonna have to be placed with the existing jointed properties on the south and on the north. That's about all I have to say about it. I don't know if anyone's had a chance to view what we're talking about out there. It's kind of a peculiar situation, to say the least.
Anyone have any questions?
Mr. Maynard, do you have anything? Go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I, Kevin Maynard.
Just turn the microphone, tell your name and address.
Yep.
So we can get it on the record.
Kevin Maynard, nine two five South Main Street, Grapevine, Texas. One of the things that we discovered when we acquired this property is when Mr. Trotter divided the one acre into four lots, he had agreed to put curbs and gutters, which city council approved and P and Z approved, and it all made sense. After we got out there and started looking at elevations and discovering that pretty much Dale Street runs into Choctaw. All the water moves from, from the front of Dale to the back of Dale and into Choctaw. The sidewalk would literally be ended with a fence and a tree line. And then the, I'm afraid that the curb will create a funnel to this lady's house. It's gonna funnel the water south on Dale Street and roll right into the homes that she's referring to. I didn't know that until tonight. I think that there is a program involved here in Stevensville that I think that it's kind of a minor type thing where we can take what it would originally cost us to put the sidewalks and the curbs in and pay a percentage to a more broad approach to where if you were to do the whole street, we'll put a twenty-five percent of what it would cost us to put in the sidewalks and the gutters towards a bigger plan, a future plan, something that would solve those types of problems. Because that's what we would like to see. I mean, we don't want to see anybody's houses get flooded. That's crazy. Packing sandbags and things of that nature. So if there's, if there's such a thing like that that does exist, which I think there is, maybe we would consider something along those lines. I'm just putting it out there for the council to consider.
Any questions?
I have a question for Steve, I guess, on that. If, if we were to, based on Mr. Maynard's idea, if we were to grant the sidewalk waivers tonight, that would eliminate him from any requirement of paying anything. Is that correct? That could be done at a staff level.
So the major waiver process is approved by a city council. The minor waiver is approved at the city staff level. That decision is generally made on the front end of the process. So the applicant chooses if they want to pursue the minor waiver process by staff or if they want to come before city council for a possible relief from the entire requirement. So in this case, they chose to come forward with the minor, with the major waiver process. And since we had initiated this process, we didn't feel that we should stop it midstream and revert back to the minor waiver. So certainly we can take that direction if necessary or needed, but we felt we should come through the entire process before discussing anything further.
But that solution's only as it relates to sidewalk.
It's actually for, it's a minor waiver process that would be good for sidewalk curb and gutter.
Curb and gutter?
I believe that's correct.
So we can't just waive, I mean, we can't just say, "No sidewalks," but you still have to put in curb and gutter?
There's just no other money requirement from.
If we grant the.
Unless he just wanted to out of the goodness of his heart, he wouldn't be required.
We'll take that.
I was gonna say, that would be so nasty.
She'll take your check tonight.
Steve, were these improvements incorporated into the original design of the development?
Yes, sir, in your packet. I do have some correspondence from Mr. Williams. And the record drawings, it referenced that the street widening, the sidewalk curb and gutter were all noted on the record drawings. It would have to be installed when the properties were developed, so.
And that was part of the packet that was approved for the development prior to your ownership, but it was a part that was approved?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Okay.
Anybody else? Anything else you want to say?
No, I mean, thank you for having us. Appreciate that.
Thank you very much. We're gonna technically call each of those up as a public hearing. So that's, we're closing the public hearing on SV twenty twenty-one zero zero six. We'll open a public hearing on SV twenty-one, twenty twenty-one zero zero seven. You wanna speak in favor? Speak in opposition. We'll close the public hearing. Have case number twenty twenty-one zero zero eight. Anybody wanna come and speak in opposition or in favor? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Case number twenty twenty-one zero zero nine. Anybody wanna come speak in favor or opposition? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. And open a public hearing on SV twenty twenty-one zero ten. Anybody wanna come speak in favor or opposition? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Hearing, we've had some comments tonight, so do I hear any recommendations? We have to vote on these separately.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion, case number SV twenty twenty-one dash zero zero six, to approve the sidewalk waiver for three thirty-one Choctaw.
Have a motion, I hear a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion, a second, further discussion? Proceed to vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No.
No.
Call, roll call, vote. Place one?
No.
Place two? No. Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
No.
Place five?
Aye.
Place six?
No.
Place seven?
No.
Place eight?
Aye.
Okay, I have, I have five to three, is that right? Okay, motion fails, right?
Yes.
Okay, motion fails. Item, public, excuse me, case number twenty twenty-one zero zero seven. Do I hear a motion?
Mayor, I'd make the motion to deny the request for a waiver from the sidewalk in case SV twenty twenty-one dash zero zero seven.
Have a motion, I hear a second? Second. Have a second? You for the discussion? Proceed to vote all in.
Can I?
Yes, sir.
We're literally voting to put sidewalks into current property owners' fence and trees. I mean, I just, I want that on public records.
It's already developed on either side.
It's already developed, so. And, and I don't think it meets the elevation requirement. I mean, we already have, we know we have a problem with the street. We have a problem with curb and gutter not being there. It's not gonna be at the proper elevation. Why would you put a sidewalk?
Okay. Any other discussion? Proceed to vote all in favor, say aye.
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 If the motion is to deny.
Correct.
So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Motion fails. So now do we have to come back and approve it? Okay, so we have a motion to approve the request.
I'll make a motion that we approve the request.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. That, you, Brandon?
Yes, sir.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, roll call, vote. Place one?
No.
Place two?
No.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Place six?
No.
Place seven?
Aye.
Place eight?
Aye.
Motion is five, three, right? Motion passes. Thank you.
They have one lot with a sidewalk.
They have one lot with a sidewalk on it. Okay, public hearing, excuse me, on item twenty twenty-one zero zero eight. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, make sure I'm on the right one. Make the motion to deny the curb and gutter waiver for case number SV zero, two zero two one dash zero zero eight for two fifties out there.
You have a motion? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Again?
I do have some discussion on this. I, this really just be a request if we could, Nick, if, either way. But certainly if this curb and gutter waiver is denied, I would like to see the city make sure that we address those downstream problems. If that's, is that, do you feel like that's reasonable? Or like that'll be a feasible thing to, to address?
We will be addressing it.
I guess that should be my question.
We will address it this fiscal year.
I want to make sure we remember, also, we have a case, similar case over on. Spring, spring bouquets?
And it's not the same reasoning, but it's the same result.
But it's the same problem. We got warrants at people's yards or in houses.
And it's just that, again, the discussion, it's ongoing fixes that we've got to fix that are not, are not cheap. That have gotta be addressed because they directly affect the citizens that we serve. And so we've gotta, we've gotta continue to be creative and find ways to do this, but actually do them. And the fact is, it's a couple million dollars, and we, where we find a couple million dollars is hard to find, but we've got to start finding.
I'll say that the two million bucks is probably, now two two, it'll be two three next year, et cetera, et cetera, so just like.
Or four.
Or four? Okay.
I think that the, the problems Miss Carey is having and, and those on, the houses on either side of her, are the exact reasons we are now requiring curb and gutter. And it's going to, to, as we see these things, especially in these infill lots, we're going to see some, it's going to highlight some issues that we may or may not be aware exist. And, and if it's feasible for us to address them at that time, then that's what we need to do.
This, this could, without us doing something, this could cause a bigger problem for them, for sure.
And you'll have to, you'd have to tear out the curb and gutter.
And that's my worry, when we redo the road, are we tearing out the curb and gutter? Would we, if they put this in, we do the work that needs to be done, then are we just going in and tearing out this work? Can I estimate that?
Sure.
If curb and gutter or sidewalk were to be put in, certainly we'd work with the developers to make sure those grades were met and that the improvements were not put in in vain. Certainly, the last thing I'm going to do is tear out public improvements.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to deny the curb and gutter, or request to waive. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pa, so the request is denied. Next item, twenty twenty one zero zero nine, do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion to deny the curb and gutter request for SV two zero two one dash zero zero nine.
Second.
Have a motion and a second?
Is that sidewalk?
Oh, is that a sidewalk? I'm sorry. I will withdraw my motion then.
Very much. And your second, okay, do I hear a motion and a second then? We're going to have to approve it or disapprove?
Nine.
I'm sorry?
It's, it's SV twenty twenty one zero zero nine.
Zero zero nine. Sidewalk. Sidewalk. On Main Street.
I make the motion we approve the waiver request for twenty twenty one zero, deny the waiver request for twenty twenty one zero zero nine.
To deny it.
Sorry, to approve.
To approve it.
To approve it, correct.
Okay. Can I have a motion and a second to approve it? Further discussion?
The motion is to approve the waiver.
Approve the waiver.
The sidewalk.
Sidewalk waiver. Correct. This is, thanks for asking the question. Why this is done oddly tonight, okay. Any further discussion? See to vote all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion passes. Okay. Next item is occasion with twenty twenty one zero ten, which is curb and gutters at two forty four South Dale. Do I hear a motion?
I make the motion to deny two zero two one dash zero one zero curb and gutter waiver request at two forty four South Dale.
Now, second.
The motion is second? Further discussion? See to vote all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, so that we have denied the request, the waiver. It's like saying the negative of the negative. Okay, thank you very much. Thank y'all. Thank you, Steve. Next item, we're skipping fourteen and fifteen, it's been polled.
Yes, sir, next case would be RZ twenty twenty one dash zero one eight. This is for six eight three West Harleton. It's a rezon request from retail and commercial business to R one single family. You may recall that we've heard this case once before, they were originally asked for R three zoning, that was denied. They came back and asked for a change to R one on November seventeenth, twenty twenty one. P and Z met and by a vote of six to zero, recommended the city council approve the rezon request. You may also recall that the heir of the property is stating that they no longer wish to operate this family business, and therefore that supports their reasoning behind the request to R one. Property is currently zoned B two. The adjacent properties to the east are future land use R one, with that mayor being.
Any questions for Steve?
Did you have any communication from the adjacent properties or anybody within the two hundred foot radius?
No, sir, no communications in favor or in opposition, only, only from the request area.
Did they not indicate at the time the previous request was made that they didn't want to see commercial use in there? Is my memory correct on that?
That's correct.
Or multifamily, either one?
They were hoping for R three zoning, that was denied, but they do not wish to continue the business operation at that particular location, six eight three West Harleton.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Hearing now, we'll go into public hearing. Anyone want to come speak in favor of the request? Anyone want to speak in opposition to the request? Hearing now, we'll close the public hearing, do I hear a motion?
I have the rezoned property as presented from B two to R one.
Second.
A motion, was that just you, Justin?
Yes.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you, sir. Next item.
Mayor, council, next case is PD twenty twenty one zero zero three, zero zero four and zero zero five. This is for three parcels on Washington, which are eight fifty five and eight sixty five and eight seventy three Washington. There's also, two addresses are on one parcel, the third parcel is eight seventeen West Washington. So four addresses on three parcels. The applicant is requesting a rezon to PD and the intended project is for town home development. We have maps identifying the water and sewer availability. The properties in question are currently zoned retail and commercial. They are the three that are highlighted in blue in your packet. And then the future land use is neighborhood business. Again, the request is to, a rezon request to a planned development. On August fifteenth, twenty twenty one, the applicant presented a conceptual plan to the Planning and Zone Commission. And then the, the concept includes or proposes twenty-three units on point nine four acres, which is a density of twenty-four point four seven acres, or twenty, twenty-four point four seven units per acre, and it includes fifty-one parking spaces. The applicant is now requesting the approval to the rezon to PD. And in this, sir, when we went to P and Z, we discussed the renderings that are included in your packet. There was a question about the development schedule, which has been submitted at this time, that's also in your packet. There was also a question by P and Z about the building height exceeding the thirty-five foot requirement. However, after further consideration and discussion with Mr. Flanagan, they are within the height restriction based on the, the building code and the way the definition is written in our Code of Ordinances. So the actual height of the ridgeline will be roughly forty-one to forty-two feet, but the building height, based on how it's determined in the, the city code, is roughly thirty-four point eight feet, thirty-four point eight inches. I did speak with the fire marshal prior to being here tonight, and he stated that this does not present any major challenges or concerns for them as far as firefighting abilities. This is a project that, also, there's a property behind this project, which is the Stevenville Mobile Home Park. You may recall there was a question about that regarding a forty-foot access easement that had been granted. That was actually found by the property owner of Stevenville Mobile Home Park. It was a document created in nineteen twenty-six, it's still a legal and binding document. The developer and applicant went back to their site plan and redeveloped their site plan to make certain that that right of way was, remained in place. So you have a, a site plan in your packet, and I believe Mr. Reese Flanagan is here tonight to answer any questions you may have, and of course, I'd be glad to answer your questions as well.
Any questions for Steve?
Steve, does this, this is all, is strictly townhomes? There's no commercial development?
Yes, sir, strictly townhome development.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Steve, do you run this by, I mean, is, let's look at the map, that's central across the street, right?
Yes, sir.
What's it going to do to traffic and safety on Washington there?
Mayor, it's a great question, and also a question that came up during P and Z. In our development process, the engineer will have to basically certify that it will not generate more than one thousand additional trips per day. And if it exceeds that limitation, then a traffic impact, impact analysis would have to be completed along with the civil review process. So that will be addressed during the review.
Because I know Washington's extremely narrow right there.
Yes, sir.
Fortunately, there is a fence across the street, supposedly to keep kids off of the Washington from school.
With the unit density there, I, I think will fall below that one thousand additional trips per day. But of course, I'm not an engineer, and that will come later with the engineer certification.
I know what happens when you bring, you do it all down Washington now, until you get to Lillian, you have, you know, dooleys that decided to go into the turning lane, and now you haven't got enough room on either side to get past, and so you end up with car wrecks, people zooming out and zooming in, so I'm, I'm concerned.
Yes, sir, and we, we have mentioned those concerns to Mr. Flanagan, and they are very well aware of it. And so if the PD is approved, rezoned for PD tonight, then as we get into the development process, we'll certainly look at that more closely.
Okay, other questions? Yes, sir.
Steve, do, do they, am I looking at their site plan correctly? They have multiple driveways?
They have a, I believe, a drive that comes in off of Washington, and then the, the access point to allow that right of way, the easement that I mentioned earlier, to maintain that easement with the previous, with the landlord to the north of them, property owner to the north of them, yes, sir.
Well, and it, it looks like that there's two on Washington Street, plus that one on the back, but I may be looking at it wrong.
Yes, sir, they, they have in their site plan, basically, two entry points for the development.
Is TechStop going to allow the, the curb cuts for them to do that?
Mr. Flanagan has indicated that they are in the process of working with TechStop.
Yeah, I thought there was some kind of restriction on more than two hundred feet, had to be at least two hundred feet or two hundred fifty feet between cuts like that. And I've had, so, we've had some other folks that were, they couldn't do the project because of that, on State Highway. Okay, any other questions? Thank you, Steve.
Yes, sir.
Open a public hearing on project twenty, twenty twenty one zero zero three, twenty twenty one zero zero four, and twenty, twenty twenty one zero zero five. Anyone want to come speak in favor of the project? State your name and address.
Reese Flanagan, address twenty four fifty North Garrett Avenue, Dallas, Texas. So sibling for you on the project, happy to answer traffic questions. We haven't looked into, I would say, detailed design for the traffic, but as far as comparing this to a commercial or retail land use, we're going to result in about a fifth of the total daily traffic trips. With twenty-eight units, we're expecting around two hundred eighty, the subdivision ordinance states about ten trips per single-family unit. To do that traffic impact analysis, we would need a thousand. Either way, we're very aware of the concern with the elementary school right next to it, so we're going to consider that as we get into design. And with TechStop, that's a good point. Typically, there is a, a minimum distance you must meet. We are hopeful because the entire frontage of that property today is basically one big drop cut, us reducing that ingredient to concentrated drops. We're going to run that by TechStop and continue coordinating, but it should be a better condition that's out there today.
We did some stuff, Nick, on, over by Wendy's, where we widened the street, we did the same thing over on three seventy-seven, where by Hulseps, we did some widening there, where there. Yes, sir. Then it kind of cut in to allow for some movement of traffic. Are you, would y'all be interested, willing to look at something like that?
As far as some kind of like right turn, D cell line to get in there? We'll certainly look at it. We know that even, even with this rezon request, there would be a, another waiver request to not dedicate right there, so there's plenty of opportunity to, to consider that if we can fit that in.
Other questions?
So today, we're not looking for you to accept or, we're not looking to make adjustments to this request, this is just to begin the next step?
This is just for the rezon of the block. It's not anything to do with.
You're going to rezon it as a PD, and then we'll have the, the final.
The client will come in next, yes, sir.
Other questions? Thank you, sir. Anybody want to speak in opposition to the plan or request? Hearing now, we'll close the public hearing and, do we have to each of the individual items or the one product, one tonight? For, do I hear a motion on items twenty twenty one zero zero three, zero zero four, zero zero five?
I'll make a motion to approve the rezon change to planned development.
Second.
Motion is second? Further discussion? Yes, sir.
I was going to say, we've, I have some concerns over this being residential along Washington Street and not being reserved for more commercial development. Those developers doing some other work in, in town and has been, seems like great so far, and I appreciate them, their willingness to invest in Stevenville, but, but I've got some heartburn over this not being a commercial development along a, what is a commercial street?
Anybody else?
I had a question for Steve. When you, when you sent the letters out on this particular rezon, were there any comments or any input from any of the neighbors, including the school?
Didn't receive anything other than from the property owner of the Stevenville Mobile Home Park. We've been in discussion on this, certainly wanted to address her concern about the, the easement or access to her property, and they have worked with us on that. That was the only, only contact I had on, on this particular request.
Anybody else?
I actually think, Ricky, if you, if you think about the traffic count and where it's at, this is, a mix is probably better than just an entire street of fast food joints or things that have ingress, egress, rush hour traffic, I mean, lunch hour traffic. I think a mixture maybe gives you better traffic and walkability, keeps that a little better than maybe even what they have there now. It's just that, I mean, I, I, the traffic is a, a big concern, for sure. But I, I think you, you, you've got to, you've got to have a mix of those things to be successful.
Mayor, something Mr. Huckabee said made me think of a question for Mr. Flanagan, if I can ask you. Do you have a, a target group that you anticipate leasing these, or are these for sale, or are they for lease?
They are for sale, and, and we think it's going to be fixed. I mean, we think there could be some mix of students in that area, but it's, these all are for sale.
Okay. And that, that may limit the traffic flow because there, there will not be normally as, as many entrances and exits for an ownership as there would be for a rental, possibly.
Sure, yeah, in this case, it would be just.
Thank you.
Have a motion is second on the floor. See to vote all in favor of approving the rezoning to planned development. Say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Sorry. Sorry, Mayor.
What'd you say?
I said, sorry.
Okay.
Didn't mean to jump the gun on you.
There you go. That's all right. We're hour into it, we've got ways, ways to go.
Got to be quick on the draw.
There you go. Steve, anything else on yours? Tourism and Visitors Bureau Committee, Ms. Durfee.
Mayor and council, we, as the committee met November sixteenth, we reviewed an application for the hotel occupancy tax funds for the Buckles and Bugs Festival that will be held in March. The promoter and the two gentlemen from here in town that are helping to make this festival happen all came and gave a, a presentation, and Mr. Huckabee made the recommendation, and it was seconded by Mr. Pendleton, that we approve the application for the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars, and it carried unanimously. So I would make the motion that we.
Do we approve that?
Yeah, we approve.
Okay. And a motion, I hear a second?
Second, sir.
Did we approve that one?
Yeah, we approve. Yes.
And the motion, I hear is second?
Second, sir.
Have a motion second by Darryl, Darren? Any comments?
Leanne, was at this 25,000 price point, was that a title sponsorship?
Yes, sir.
Is that the Tourism and Visitors Bureau is the title sponsor of the game?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Is there funding available for it? I missed the meeting. I apologize, but is there funding in the hotel funds for that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
More than enough.
Okay.
Hope to see the vote all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Same sign of opposed, motion passes. Next item, Public Works Committee, Mr. Nix.
Thank you, Mayor. The Public Works Committee met and discussed a proposed contract with Pipeline Analysis to perform that evaluation of sanitary sewer basin number one. The budgeted amount in the 21-22 budget was $34,000. The proposal from Pipeline Analysis came in on our budget of $34,000. This is an ongoing project to evaluate all of our sewer system. They perform an in-depth analysis of mapping and testing and finding the areas that they believe need repairs and/or maintenance. And then they provide those reports to our Public Works Department so that we can schedule repairs as necessary in those areas. Pipeline Analysis has done the previous evaluations of our basins. And as I said, this is an ongoing project following an agreement with TCEQ. The committee voted unanimously to approve the contract with Pipeline Analysis for the sewer basin number one. And I would make that motion to approve that contract with Pipeline Analysis.
Have a motion on here is second?
Second.
Have a motion is second. Any discussion? See the vote all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item, I'm sure?
That's the end of my report, Mayor.
Public Health and Safety Committee, Mr. Pendleton.
Thank you, Mayor. We met to consider what's gonna be on the Finance Committee report, the purchase of the, the, oh, the communication system for the PV with L3 Harris Technologies. The committee recommended to full council subject to financing for approval of that system. So I think that's for information only and we'll take up that matter in the Finance Committee.
Thank you, sir. Nomination's committee, Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of different items. First of all, we'd like to recommend the following. The nominations committee would like to recommend to the council the following nominees for the different commissions and boards.
We'll make them as one announce list?
I'll make it as one list if that's okay with you.
That's fine with me.
For Planning and Zoning Commission, place two, Justin Allison. Place four, Mary Beach McGuire. Place six, Brian Leslie. Alternate one, Tom Hines, and alternate two, Corey Jenkins. Board of Adjustment, place two, Ben Tackett. Place four, Mick Quasi. Place five, Kelly John Nance. For CETA, place two, Malcolm Cross. Place four, Lori Beatty. Place six, Chris Gifford. For Tourism Investors Bureau Advisory Board, place two, Phil Greer. Place four, Austin Hubbard. Place six, Michael Brown. For Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, place two, Lindsay Laurent. Place four, Jill McGangus. Place six, Josh Raymond. For Senior Citizen Advisory Board, Elizabeth Johnson, place two. Place four, Jan Smith. Place six, Dana Worrell. For the Library Advisory Board, place two, Darla Fent. Place four, Katie Aikenberg. Place five, Catherine Quinnell. Place six, Catherine Smith. For the Main Street Advisory Board, place two, Jeffrey Hamilton. Place four, Kelly Salt. Place six, Rita Cook. For the Airport Advisory Board, place two, Brandon Greenhall. Place four, Austin Brown. And place six, Hardy Hampton. For the Professional Trade Boards, the committee recommends that all sitting members of the trade boards be reappointed with the exception of Seth Moore and Mike Walker. And the committee recommends that Jared Hancock be appointed to the electrical board. Now, in, we also would like to recommend a, an ordinance.
Can we vote on the, let's vote on the nominations first if you don't mind. Or is it gonna affect the nomination?
It will affect the nomination.
All right, then let's do that first then.
With regard to the ordinance, it's a recommendation of the committee that an ordinance outlining the Airport Advisory Board be amended. And that amendment is in front of your group. It's in the, in your packet. Basically, it changes the number of board members who must be residents of the city to four members of the board of the seven-person board. And those not residing, this is another change, those not residing in the city must be residents of the county. So it'd be four, three, maximum of three outside the city.
Outside the city.
And we would recommend that that ordinance and changes be approved and I would make a motion to that effect.
You have a motion, we're voting on the ordinance amendment?
Second.
Have a motion is second. Any discussion? See the vote all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, sir. Next item, is it considered the appointments of the boards?
That's right. And those, we would move that the, the list of advisory board members and commission members that we previously done be approved, including, which includes Airport Advisory Board, the Main Street Library, Senior Center, Parks and Recreation, Tourism, CETA, Board of Adjustment, and Plan and Commission be approved.
Second.
Have a motion is second. Any discussion? See the vote all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hasky?
Finance Committee met on November the 16th. Chief Harris presented the system purchase agreement pricing summary between the City of Stevensville and L3 Harris Technologies for consideration. The Finance Committee voted unanimously to move forward with the system purchase agreement pricing summary to council for approval. And Mayor, I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Have a motion on here is second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion?
Chief, thank you for the work that you've done on this. I know that's been quite the undertaking and we appreciate your commitment to getting that done. I think everyone that was on the council at the time, the chief provided a, an audio recording of him in, he had his firearm drawn and couldn't communicate with the rest of his department. And that's a scary proposition. It's been a stroke of luck that we haven't had a disaster happen. And let's hope that in the implementation phase that we can get this up and running before something bad happens. So, thank you.
Proceed the vote all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Chief. Monica.
Mayor, Council. This is our budget report for period ending October 31st, 2021, the first month of our fiscal year. For our property taxes, we received $453,000 in property taxes in the month of October, which is $113,000 or 33.55% over funds collected last October. It's 6.68% of our budget, which is about 2.17% more than anticipated. I think we're getting back into some pre-COVID patterns and maybe had some little earlier payers this year. And plus the assessment was a little bit more. Our sales tax, we received $695,000 in October, resulting in $66,000 or 10.52% more than the funds collected last October. The amount collected is 9.49% of the 7.3 million budgeted, which is about 1% higher than what I had anticipated based on historical. The target budget for operating revenue is 2.04 million. We received 2.5 million fiscal year to date, resulting in $470,000 over our target budget. This is due to our property taxes, sales taxes, service charges, and we sold some equipment. The target budget for operating expenditures is 2.2 million. We expended 1.7 million fiscal year to date, which is $546,000 under our target budget, which is not unanticipated. We are a little slow to the start when we get to our fiscal year.
These gonna spend it pretty fast here, real quick.
That's right. So don't get excited. Our operating revenue received last year was 2 million. Compared to the 2.5 million, it's $512,000 increase. And that's due to our property tax, sales tax, franchise taxes, service charges, and of course, the sale of the equipment. The operating expenditures last year were 2 million as compared to, as compared to the 1.7 million, which is a $343,000 decrease. But of, of that, $260,000 is related to the repair of the public safety building last year that of course was not a repeat this year, this time. So, are there any questions?
Any questions? Thank you very much, ma'am. Next item. Mr. Stanford's gonna talk to us in executive session, so we'll skip this item tonight. Consent agenda, do I hear a motion?
We approve the consent agenda.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Consent accepted. Comments by city manager?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I wanted to remind everybody that today is Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day. Very critical day in our country's existence. On the 10th, which is Friday, between 11:00 and 1:00 p.m., we'll have the city employee Christmas party and employee recognition. City hall will be closed during that time period. Of course, the council and a plus one is, are invited to the party. If you'll just let Cheryl know that you'll be coming and who your plus ones will be. December 22nd, 23rd will be closed for, for Christmas. I'm sorry. The 31st, the 31st will be closed for New Year's, I believe it's the 31st. Our next meeting is January 4th of 2022. And Mr. Mayor, I would conclude with, I wish, and on behalf of my wife, we wish everybody watching and everybody here, Merry Christmas.
I just wanted to say that I appreciate everybody that has worked so hard to get the downtown looking beautiful and Christmasville. And the parade was amazing and we had such great feedback. And I really appreciate everybody's hard work on that and Merry Christmas.
Yours as well. Your hard work.
Thank you.
Yeah. Downtown looks amazing. Thank you for the commitment to the Julies and everyone else involved on getting the parade and everything else that's happening downtown done. As well as thanks to the ERF County United Way, looking at some tickets there that light up the night. If you haven't taken your family to go see that, it's a great show and a great opportunity to, to spread the Christmas joy. And then I'd be remiss to not mention that the Yellow Jackets are back in the state semifinals. So, pretty exciting, pretty exciting time to be a Stevensville sports fan, so.
I'll echo the same thing. Downtown looks great. I'm excited. We had some meetings today about downtown, so I'm excited. We got some stakeholders from the community here and involved them in some conversations about downtown. And I think the future of downtown looks really bright. I think there's a lot of good things coming. So if you're out and about this weekend, Friday, we do have Charlton graduation. We have two ceremonies this weekend. So Harvin Street will be extremely busy. Restaurants will be extremely busy. It's a great thing for Stevensville, so just be aware of that.
Brady?
Hard to believe it's Christmas in it. Look at that window. It feels like it was just July and it was light outside at 100. Now it's Christmas time and lights and before you know it, it'll be springtime and moves way too quick, but Merry Christmas to all.
It'll be 85 Friday.
Bah humbug.
Amen.
Mayor, I'm gonna echo some of the comments perhaps. Stevensville is growing. Stevensville is changing. Stevensville is moving forward. I think faster than most of us ever anticipated that it would. It's a little scary sometimes. But I think, I think we're doing positive things. I think we're doing good things for this generation, but for future generations as well. And I want to thank the council members and staff, because I know council members do a lot of work. Staff does the majority of it. And I want to thank our staff because they work long and hard to produce the results that we get to see when we vote on these things. And I appreciate that. And I want to wish all of them Merry Christmas and, and thank them for their diligence and their work during this year and the coming year.
Gerald?
I'd like to echo the same thing, by the way. Merry Christmas to all. The downtown looks good. It looks really good. It's gonna look a lot better here in a few days. I think Jason was telling me that the banners are coming in this week. And so they're gonna be put up around the square and, and lights and so forth. It looks really good. What's really interesting is, is driving over the weekend through downtown and seeing families with kids and those kids getting their pictures made with these different displays around. And you see it every weekend. You see it every day practically, which is a really exciting thing. And who would've guessed? I think it's really good. The lights look super and, and the Christmas tree. And also a big thank you to the, to the United Way for what they're doing down in the park and for the openness that this council and our fellow council members have shown to making this community look a lot better. And, and, and who are planning a lot for the future. You're absolutely right. It's amazing what the, the changes that have occurred this year and that are occurring right now. And all I can say is, if you like what you see, you're gonna love the next few years because it's gonna be super around here. And so Merry Christmas to all our fellow council people. Thank you.
When you go eighth, everybody-
I told you it's gonna start on there next time. I'll do it next time.
No, it's quite okay. It's quite okay.
We'll go the other direction.
No. I just wanna say, live parade was, was awesome. Christmas field was awesome. It was neat to see downtown, the hustle and bustle and children, voices and singing and pictures and fireworks. And it was just really, it was really a neat experience. Also, if we need rain, we can just play in a parade. That tends to work pretty well. So may need a parade in June, August area timeframe. So that, but, but none of that happens with a lot of volunteers, a lot of work. Another example of that, Keeps Stevensville Beautiful does a lot of work, a lot of charity in this community and it, and it is really awesome to see. Another example of that was this weekend, Coffee and Cars. They had a whole flat bed full of toys to donate and help. We've got Shop With A Cock coming up. We've got all kinds of things. And it's just a, it's a, it's a really cool, really cool to watch the, the charity that is in this community at all the time. So, so what's Ricky say? It's a great time to live in-
It's a great time to live in Stevensville, Texas.
It's a great time to live in Stevensville, Texas. And I will just say Merry Christmas to all and to all a good night. If we're done now.
Want to mention, thanks to the fire department. You go look at Mulaw. And I have a camp fan can around there. Thank you for putting that up there. More cowbell, more cows. There you go. Exactly. A few years ago, we dedicated a historical marker to the cemetery on, we call it the Black Cemetery. It's, it's called-
Mount Olive Cemetery.
And while I was there, I was speaking to some of the folks who were at the event and they mentioned that there are lots of folks that are buried there that are not marked graves over this history of the cemetery. And so I've been working with staff and we're going to, we found some assistance through Texas State University. They're gonna come sometime in January. They still take two trips.
They were here today, sir.
Okay. Got started today. And identifying where those graves are. And we'll have a system later to mark those graves. If we can find out who it is, then we'll be willing to put names on it. Otherwise, it'll be unmarked or unnamed plot. I also want to mention Dr. Sheri Bin, who is Vice President of Equity and Inclusion, I think is the title.
Diversity.
Diversity inclusion, excuse me. At Charlton and she is getting some of her students to get involved and we're gonna be writing some articles about it. Doing, she's working with the citizens and getting some input from them on how to, what we need to do there. Also, it will be included soon in the National Registry of-
Black cemetery.
Black cemeteries. That's what I thought. I just want to make sure I was right. And so I appreciate Sheri for doing that and the president for directing her to do that as well. So I appreciate that very much. It's gonna be good for Stevensville, Texas. I want to mention, a couple of people mentioned up here about the work the city council puts in. I've been on council now for, it's been 11 years, I guess. Pretty close. Maybe 12, I can't remember. And it's, I've seen a lot of good councils come and go and I tell you, these folks here are great members. Everybody on this, in this room here, up here on this table, I know the staff do a lot of work. They get paid to work. We don't. And I want y'all to know that they're, the citizens understand that everyone up here spends hundreds of hours a year in this building around the city of Stevensville, helping make things better. And so they're very, everyone here, I'm proud of everybody here for what y'all do for the city of Stevensville. It is, it's a great day to be in Stevensville, Texas. It's a great day to be part of the city council of Stevensville, Texas. With that, I'm going to call this into executive session. I've got to read all of this.
Mayor.
We forgot to mention Holly Jolly on the 13th.
Okay. We gonna mention?
Holly Jolly's on the 13th.
Holly Jolly's on the 13th. Thank you very much. In compliance with provisions of Texas Open Meanings Laws, chapter, subchapter D, Government Code Vernon's, Texas codes annotated in accordance with section 551-072 and 087. And we're gonna talk about five items. about five items. We'll stand.
Mayor, make a motion to approve the expenditures for, as discussed in executive session, for Project Pay.
Have a motion or a second?
Second.
A motion is second for the discussion. See to vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Do we have another item?
I'll make a motion to approve the developer agreement with the Staple Development LLC with the condition of striking the word, the three words in section four, F, at least substantial.
Yes, sir.
I just got a phone with their attorney. Their attorney is fine with striking those three words and I told him that the council would not approve it unless it was signed by their side by Friday and he said that will happen.
Okay. Have a motion, have a second? Have this motion second. See to vote all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. There are no other items to be considered from executive session in public hearing, so it is 7:43. We will stand adjourned.
Merry Christmas.